Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Muskegon City Commission Meeting for December 10th, 2013. If I could have everyone stand, please. Before we begin, I'd like to invite up Reverend Diane Stark of Unity Church of Muskegon to lead us in a brief prayer. Good evening.
Thank you. Let us pray. As we gather for this Muskegon City Commission Meeting, we give thanks for guidance from on high, as we partner together to have a community that works for all of us. Working together, we create a shared sacred history, and we move into the future hand in hand. We are grateful for the wisdom, integrity, and compassion to lead this community into prosperity and stability. Amen. Thank you.
And now the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Reverend. May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Hood?
Here.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Here.
Commissioner German?
Here.
Commissioner Waringo?
Here.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Here.
Commissioner Markowski?
Here.
Mayor Galvin?
Here.
We're all here? Isn't that lovely? Well, before we get into the meat and potatoes of the business meeting, we have some honors and awards to address, so I'll start those. It's a great honor to have with us tonight team members of two of the most storied gridiron teams in Michigan, if not, you know, within the region. My Uncle Joe Galvin was on one of the football squads in the 1930s. His name is on a brass plaque going into the main entrance. He gave his life during World War II. Full disclosure, I'm a 1975 graduate from Muskegon Catholic. Back in those days, these people, you know, played each other back then, so I have a lot of room in my heart for both the Big Reds and the Crusaders. And it's a great honor to be able to stand here in the position of the, as Mayor of the City of Muskegon, and honor both organizations. But if I could call up Coach Shane Fairfield. I'd like to present the coach and the team and the school certificate of recognition. Whereas it gives me a great deal of pleasure to express to all the members of the Muskegon High School Big Reds Football Team our sincere admiration for an exciting, hard-fought, and successful season. And whereas, under the guidance of Coach Shane Fairfield, we congratulate the Muskegon High Big Reds Football Team as the 2012 and 2013 state finalist. And whereas this team, fine team of young men demonstrated an outstanding spirit of dedication, enthusiasm, and hard work, now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Galvin, speaking on behalf of the City Commission and the entire community, deem it an honor and a pleasure to present this certificate of recognition to the Big Red Football Team for a remarkable year in football. Coach, team members, thank you for your diligence, your hard work, and instilling that Muskegon pride. Thank you. We've got a little something for you to take home. Bring that on, everybody.
Just real quickly, on behalf of these young men, as remarkable as they are and as much we love our football team and our community supports these young men, they appreciate and they understand how important you, ladies and gentlemen, are to our city and the things you do for us to allow us to be a part of this great city and moving it forward to be a great place to be and be a part of. We would like to thank you guys and continue our fight forward to make Muskegon the best place to be. So, thank you for all your time and efforts also.
Thank you, Coach.
Good evening.
Good to see you. Good to see you. Like I said, I'm a '75 grad. I was the asthmatic kid on the block, so I never played in athletics, but I was the leading the music man in '75, so I don't know if that counts as anything, but it was fun. But once again, the City of Muskegon and all of us want to congratulate Coach Zervon and the Crusaders for bringing home the state championship. Again, a lot of pride, you know, carried in all of our hearts for the good work that you've done. So whereas it gives me a great deal of pleasure to express to all the members of the Muskegon Catholic Central Crusaders Football Team our sincere admiration for an exciting, hard-fought, and successful season, and whereas, under the guidance of Coach Steve Zervon, we congratulate the Muskegon Catholic Central Crusaders Football Team on their 2013 state Division VIII championship. And whereas this fine team of young men demonstrated an outstanding spirit of dedication, enthusiasm, and hard work, now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Galvin, speaking on behalf of the City Commission and the entire community, deem it an honor and a pleasure to present this certificate of recognition to Muskegon Catholic and the Crusaders for a remarkable year in football. Thank you very much, and hey, I've got something for you to hang on your wall, too.
I just want to thank you guys for this certificate of recognition, and, you know, thanks for the City of Muskegon for all the support they've given the Crusaders over the years, and especially this year's. And, you know, I accept this on not only behalf of the players that, you know, played this year and the dedication that they had this year towards the team, but also to all the alumni out there and the former Crusaders who played. I know anytime that a team goes on and, you know, fortunate enough to achieve a state title, there's a lot of people out there happy, not just the current players, but everybody who played before us. So, I kind of accept this on their behalf. Thank you.
Again, it's a great pleasure and an honor to be able to recognize you all tonight, and I was wondering if while we still have some time, maybe you want to run some plays between you and the Crusaders. Probably not, but we do have bunching cookies. Great job, guys. Thank you. Oh, we have two more of those signs that'll be going up on the streets, so when people come into town, they know what we're talking about. May we have the consent agenda, please?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk, summary request to approve minutes of the November 26th City Commission Meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Second reading, amendment to the Water Supplies Ordinance, Planning Economic Development. Summary request, Gene Service Incorporated has petitioned to designate a total of 13 properties located in the City of Muskegon as effective premises under the City of Muskegon Water Supply Ordinance. This request follows years of response activities, including investigation and monitoring associated with the site, as well as the Michigan Department of Quality's approval for Gene Service Incorporated to utilize Muskegon ordinance as an appropriate exposure control measure. Staff recommendation, approval of the amendment to the ordinance. Request to deny and accept properties that did not sell during the tax sale for 2013, Planning Economic Development. Summary request, the county of Muskegon held two delinquent tax auctions during 2013. There were 78 properties left after the last auction. According to the state's tax foreclosure laws, the city must state that they are not interested in obtaining them, otherwise the city will automatically receive ownership of the parcels. From the list that was provided, Planning and Community and Neighborhood Services have gone over the parcels to determine which ones to accept. Staff recommendation, to deny and accept certain parcels and authorize both the mayor and clerk to sign said resolution. Approval of building procurement contractor for Community and Neighborhood Services. Community and Neighborhood Services. Summary request, award the procurement building contract to Bradfield Home Improvement and Remodeling for the years 2014, 2015, to be used by the Community and Neighborhood Services for home rental projects. The CNS Office solicited bids through public notices for a variety of trades. Bradfield Home Improvement and Remodeling was the only bid submitted. Staff recommendation, to approve Bradfield Home Improvement and Remodeling for the bid contractor procurement bid for the Community and Neighborhood Services Office. Health and Wellness Program, Affordability Action and Risk Management. Summary of request, the City of Muskegon selected a wellness package with our health care providers several years ago. They have provided both a comprehensive analysis of our organization's health risk status and the findings of our detailed investigation into the modifiable health risks that currently drive a significant portion of our health care costs. Upon recommendation of Priority Health, we have established several wellness initiatives in attempt to address the most urgent modifiable health risk. Moving forward, we recommend implementation of a reimbursement of 50% of the cost of monthly membership fees to Weight Watchers and/or fitness clubs for full-time employees not to exceed $25 per employee per month. Employees participating will be reimbursed half the monthly cost for each monthly membership, providing proof of usage of the facility a minimum number of times during the month. The number of gym visits will be established by the Wellness Committee and approved by the city manager. The proof of documented gym attendance and Weight Watchers meetings attended will be submitted to the Risk Management Director. Staff recommendation, to approve the Wellness Committee recommendation to reimburse 50% of the cost of monthly membership fees to Weight Watchers and fitness clubs for full-time employees not to exceed $25 per employee per month, provided the employee supplies proof of the agreed-upon attendance requirements established by the Wellness Committee and city manager.
All that after we serve cookies and sweet breads tonight.
It said 2014.
Oh, got it. Commissioners, you have heard the consent agenda. Are there any items you wish to have removed for further discussion? If not, Commissioner German?
I approve to, I would motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Has been moved by Commissioner German, seconded by Commissioner Waringo, to accept the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. May we have new business?
2014 User Fee Update Finance. Summary request, city departments have reviewed and updated their user fees, and these have been incorporated into a master fee resolution for your consideration. The new fees and fee changes that are being proposed include the following: modifications and additions to farmer market fees with the opening of the new market in the spring. The fees have not changed, however, some of the names have changed, and there are some additional fees for spaces not available at the current market. Increase in administrative fees for code enforcement violations to encourage compliance. Decrease in rental registration annual fee to promote compliance. The annual fee will only include one inspection and one reinspection. Cemetery fees have been rounded up or down to make an even dollar amount and to slightly increase the fees, which have not been changed since 2004. Liquor license fees have changed to fall in line with other municipalities and to reflect reduction in requirements the city must provide to the state. Increases in some fees at the marina that have not changed in many years. The storm water cross-connection sewer treatment charge is being reviewed by the city attorney's office, so we are not proposing a fee at this time. Increase in building permit base fee for projects up to $2,000. Staff recommendation, approval.
Motion to approve?
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner Markowski, seconded by Vice Mayor Spataro, to approve the 2014 user fee update. Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. May we have item D, please?
2014 Salary Schedule Infringed Benefits for Non-Representative Employees, City Manager. Summary request, to approve and adopt the proposed salary ranges and salary schedules for the non-representative administrative, technical, professional, and supervisory employees for 2014 of a 2% increase. Staff recommendation, to approve and adopt the proposed salary ranges, salary schedules, and fringe benefit changes for non-representative employees for 2014.
Commissioner Hood?
I move to approve and adopt the proposed salary ranges and salary schedules for the non-representative administrative, technical, professional, and supervisory employees for 2014, 2% increase.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Hood, seconded by Commissioner Waringo, to approve and adopt the proposed salary ranges, salary schedules, and fringe benefit changes for non-representative employees for 2014. Any discussion? Roll call.
I'd just like someone to come and talk about this in more detail, so I can get an understanding, because I wasn't at the work session yesterday, so.
You're on.
Sure. Yep, I can do it. First thing I'd like to point out, we did do a little bit of research, I guess, into what cost of living adjustments we're going to be in communities in the West Michigan area for non-union, essentially, similar types of employees than what we're proposing this for. We reviewed 17 communities in West Michigan. They range anywhere from 0% to 2.5%, but the median of the 17 was 2%. The mean, if you're looking for the statistical average, was about 1.7%. We also reviewed what the proposal currently is to the Michigan Public Service Commission for State of Michigan Employees, and that was 2% right now as well. In addition, in negotiating with our two SEIU unions, in both scenarios, we tentatively agreed to 2% for both of those groups as well. In addition to that, when looking back at the history, I guess, of the non-union group, over the last four years, the increases have been 0%, 1%, 1%, 0%. So I'm not saying that this is necessarily an opportunity to catch them off, but it's not building on increase after increase after increase. 2% was a fair amount for the non-representative employees, especially considering where we've been over the last four years, as far as your wages go.
Okay, all right. Any other comments or questions? Not? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. May we have item C, please?
Agreements with Harris Hospitality for Pier Marquette Park, Planning and Economic Development. Summary request, Harris Hospitality has modified their plans to the development of the commercial property at Pier Marquette Park. They plan to start with a current footprint of the restaurant building, and after that is constructed and in operation, seek financing for the additional uses. Therefore, the agreement documents have been modified for city commission approval. Staff recommendations, to approve the request and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the documents subject to city staff approval of each and every exhibit.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Well, so we may begin discussion, I would move that we approve the request and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the documents subject to city staff approval on each and every exhibit.
Second. It has been moved by the vice mayor, seconded by Commissioner German, to approve the request for agreements with Harris Hospitality for Pier Marquette Park, and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the documents subject to city staff approval of each and every exhibit. Discussion? Commissioner Turnquist?
The Harris Group had an original agreement to go Phase 1, 2, and 3. So this is bringing us back, and we've approved Phase 1. Each additional phase will have to be approved individually as they come to court.
That's correct. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. May we have item D, please?
City Commission to Petition LCC to Revoke Elks Club License. Summary request, the Director of Public Safety requests that the city commission move to petition the Michigan Liquor Control Commission to revoke the Elks Charity Lodge 1397 Club Liquor License. The Elks Charity Lodge local hearing was held on December 2nd, 2013. City staff testified at the hearing under the direction of Attorney John C. Schreier. The city presented facts and information relating to many violent incidences over the past several years, with the last being a mass shooting that claimed the lives of three individuals and wounded four others. Elks Board members attended the hearing, which was open to the public, representing the interests of the Charity Lodge. The Honorable Robert Chessman presided over the matter at the request of the City of Muskegon Commission. Referee Chessman rendered a decision on December 9th, 2013. Mr. Chessman recommended the city commission formally petition the Michigan Liquor Control Commission to revoke the Elks Charity Lodge Club Liquor License. Staff recommendation, staff recommends the city commission move to petition the MLCC to permanently revoke the Elks Charity Lodge Club License as declared by Robert Chessman, which would permanently prohibit the Elks Lodge from serving any and all alcoholic beverages.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move to petition the MLCC to permanently revoke the Elks Charity Lodge Club License based on the recommendations by Robert Chessman, which would permanently prohibit the Elks Lodge from serving any and all alcoholic beverages.
Second.
It has been moved by the vice mayor, seconded by Commissioner Markowski, to move to petition the MLCC to permanently revoke the Elks Charity Lodge Club License as declared by Robert Chessman, which would permanently prohibit the Elks Lodge from serving any or all alcoholic beverages. Discussion? Vice Mayor?
I just would like to say that, you know, it's with a lot of regret that, you know, we find ourselves in this situation. This has been an organization, has been part of this community for many decades now, and over the years has done some very positive things. Unfortunately, the handling of their responsibilities as a liquor license holder has reached a point where it can't be tolerated anymore. People have a right to go and enjoy an evening out without the risk of underage drinking, violence, and death. And that's what's happened here, and I think we need to be responsible and say, "We're not going to accept that level of violence in our community, and we're not going to accept groups or facilities that allow that level of violence under their roof." So, it's with regret, but I think this is the right step for us to take. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other comments or input? Commissioner German?
On the part where being responsible as a liquor license holder, it definitely has to be some accountability. And, you know, we live in a community where it's not really a lot for young kids to do or nothing to do, and they end up in a place where they want to enjoy themselves, and the outcome is a fatality, and that's just unacceptable. And I think as a youth, you know, we all, they all make mistakes, but, you know, being in the wrong place at the wrong time, or somewhere where you think that you can have fun, but as a business owner and owner of a liquor license, there comes responsibility. And to a point, I agree with Vice Mayor, where the Elks Charity Lodge have done some real good things in this community. And even as a young man, I've visited that lodge, and, you know, it wasn't like it is now, and times have changed. And to keep our kids and our youth safe, you know, we have to make tough decisions. And this is one of the tough decisions that, you know, I feel as commissioners, we have to stand up and take and protect, you know, our citizens and our children, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Markowski?
Just regarding the upcoming vote here, I did attend the public hearing and listened to it in full, and basing my decision solely on attendance of that hearing. There were no facts brought forth that were to the contrary of this determination, and so I really think it is the most fair to vote against allowing them to serve liquor in the future.
Thank you. Is there any member of the Elks Charity Lodge that would speak on behalf of the membership at this time? If not, thank you, sir. Okay. May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. May we have item E, please?
SEIU Unit 1 Clerical Contract, City Manager. Summary request, to approve the negotiated tentative agreement with the SEIU Unit 1 Clerical Union. Staff recommendation, to approve the tentative agreement and to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract.
Commissioner Turnquist?
I would move to approve the tentative agreement and to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Turnquist, seconded by Commissioner Waringo, to approve the negotiated tentative agreement with the SEIU Unit Number 1 Clerical Union, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign it. Any discussion? Vice Mayor?
Just one comment, and this applies to this item and the next item. I'm just happy to see that, you know, when working people through their union can sit down and negotiate in good faith with management, and management can sit down in good faith and negotiate with the employees through their designated union, that you can achieve positive outcomes. Sometimes I think we lose sight of that, and I think this is an important process. I think it represents the interests of the employees, the reality of the budget, our responsibilities to the public, and is the fairest way to achieve these kinds of outcomes. So I want to just thank all who participated in that process, and I'm happy to endorse this contract.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Not? Roll call, please.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. May we have item F, please?
SEIU Unit 2 DPW Contract, City Manager. Summary request, to approve the negotiated tentative agreement with SEIU Unit 2 DPW Union. Staff recommendation, to approve the tentative agreement and to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract.
Thank you. Commissioner Hood?
I move to approve the tentative agreement and to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Hood, seconded by Commissioner Waringo, to approve the negotiated tentative agreement with SEIU Unit 2, the Department of Public Works, and to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract. Any discussion or comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Is there any other business by the commission to be brought?
I have some comments, but I'll wait till the end.
Okay, very good. Okay, public participation, I do have a request by Diane Foster to address the commission. Ms. Foster, if you'd like to come forward to the podium and give your name and address, you are allotted three minutes. Good evening.
First, I wanted to congratulate Mayor Galvin on your procurement of your job. Secondly, I wanted to thank all you gentlemen for entertaining my husband thoroughly this fall, all the way to Fort Worth. It was wonderful. I'm grateful to be a part of this city. I love it. Something told me I would some years back. Couple of things I wanted to tell you. I've been spending a lot of time in Lansing with the Law Commission and with our Judiciary Commission on the medical marijuana program. I wanted to let the commission know that the college has okayed me to bring a doctor here and some of his staff to teach an endocannabinoid class. We haven't quite decided when that's going to be, but they are excited to do this, and I just wanted to let you know. I just wanted to let you know about that. The second thing I wanted to tell you is, it is really going to be adamant that this medication is going to be tested. I have spoken to one of our state representatives in our area, and I know you all probably think I'm crazy, but I've spoken to some of the business owners also. We have a new science department coming to our city, and I think a testing facility in our college would be awesome, and it would bring finances to this department. I know you, this is a cutting-edge industry. It's not going away. It is only going to get more technical and more scientific. So, why Muskegon would not want to be on the cutting edge of this program and what's going to be going on in this industry? I just wouldn't know because we need jobs, and we need positive things going on here, and we need to understand the science of this medication better all the time. So, I'm learning all the time. People need to learn more and more all the time so they understand it better. There's only one more thing I wanted to say is, I am sorry to see the Elks Club go in that respect of, they did do some great things, and for three years I worked with them on some very nice giveaways to children for Christmas, for school. In the last year, I don't know what changed so dramatically, and I'm sorry. One of the ladies at the meeting, as we left, said, "Now there's nowhere for our kids to go." Well, if that's the best place we have for our children, to offer our kids, well, we need something better. So, I called one of, I called the principal of the St. Clair High School where my kids graduated, and I asked him if he, Mr. Miller, if he would speak for me as a person. I'd like to start to figure out what we can do to better things for our kids in this community, especially the middle school children. They are the ones that, if we catch them and we can do things with them, then maybe we can secure a little better future for them. Sometimes the little ones are more covered, and the older ones have more sense, but that middle-aged group is where they're so vulnerable. So I'd like to know, he just told me, Diane, no matter where you're living, I know you're an asset to the community. So, I would really like to work with some people in this community to come up with some ideas for our kids. And anything I can do to help, I would love to do that. So, if anybody's open to some ideas, I would really like to know. And I would also like to know if we have Little League in this town. Do we? I never hear much about it. I mean, no, I don't hear much about the Little League. I hear a lot about football, but I don't hear much about baseball.
Right. There's Little League, and Muskegon has a proud partner with, this past year, fifteen other organizations that brought summer recreation and human development programming to kids throughout the city.
Oh, I think we do a good job.
And we've, you know, partnered with Muskegon Public Schools to use their facilities, the YMCA, other organizations. So, we need people to continue to step forward, get on board, because the best resource is human resource, and each and everybody's time, talent, and treasure.
I'd love to donate my time.
Your time. Very good. Thank you, Ms. Foster.
So, thank you. Have a good day.
Is there any other member of the public that would like to address the commission? If not, I want to talk some more. Hey, Commissioner Markowski, follow me.
Can you talk around?
Commissioner, follow me.
Alrighty.
You know, when you're up on the dais and you do the work that we do, it isn't just a matter of fact of, you know, reading a bunch of words and going, "Yes," or "No," or "I don't understand, explain it," and then we all go away. It really is a matter of relationships and pulling together with our collective heart to try to do the best that we can in whatever role that we play up here, to act with all of you, the citizens of Muskegon and greater Muskegon, to make this a better community. We don't always get it right, but we keep on trying, and that's what counts. And last July, when I moved, one, two, three, four chairs from that empty one over there next to the vice mayor, because somebody in that chair decided to retire, one of our citizens stepped up and said, "Hey, I'd like to offer you my services and take the opportunity to serve as city commissioner." And so it's my great pleasure and honor to present this certificate of recognition to Commissioner Leah Markowski. Whereas one of the privileges of the office of the mayor is to recognize and honor our dedicated city commissioners, and whereas Leah Markowski has served as a member of the Muskegon Lake Watership Partnership, is a great supporter of recycling and renewable energy efforts, and has served the city faithfully as city commissioner since July 2012. And whereas Commissioner Markowski led the effort to seek proposals for transportation agencies to assist seniors with a low-cost transportation alternative when the city's budget could no longer support the senior transit program, now therefore be it resolved that I, Stephen J. Galron, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor and speaking on behalf of the entire city commission and our citizens, do hereby tender to Leah Markowski this certificate of recognition extending our deep appreciation for her distinguished service as city commissioner. We wish Leah success in all future endeavors and are grateful that the community shall still benefit from her participation in many areas of community service. Commissioner, thank you so much. And now Suzy Q. We go back a lot of years.
We do?
As a matter of fact, our folks go back a lot of years, and that to the earlier industrial age in Muskegon. But now we're not old as dirt. We're still kicking. But once again, it's a privilege to be able to stand here with Sue tonight. I've known her through the years, both of us prior to becoming city commissioners, because of our volunteer work. And I think I really first got to know you when you were with pastors. We'd, you know, pop in at some volunteer training at foundation and the like, so. It is. But we get better. But once again, a certificate of recognition, whereas one of the privileges of the office of the mayor is to recognize and honor our dedicated city commissioners, and whereas Sue Waringo served as executive director of Hospice of Muskegon County Incorporated beginning in 1982 until 1989, when she left to become executive director of Michigan Hospice. She is quoted as saying, "The kind of care given is so special. It treats the patient and the family, not the illness. It is the caring philosophy that is important about hospice. Her passion for the program is apparent to all." And whereas Commissioner Waringo served many years as director of the Muskegon Community Leadership Academy, chaired the Muskegon County Economic Development Commission for 1977, was chairwoman of the Watershed Council, and has served the city faithfully as city commissioner since January 2006. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Stephen J. Galron, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor and speaking on behalf of the entire city commission and our citizens, do hereby tender to Sue Waringo this certificate of recognition extending our deep appreciation for her distinguished service as city commissioner and our sincerest wishes for a long and happy retirement. Commissioner, thank you. As we clear our throats and wipe away our tears, Commissioner Markowski, you wanted to address the...
I just wanted to take a few minutes, as this will be, most likely unless there's some occurrence between now and the end of December, will be my last meeting on the commission. It was a privilege to be appointed, and I want to thank the commissioners who appointed me and was not elected in a general election, as the rest of you were, for having faith in someone from a newer generation. I know that can be difficult. And I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to work with and learn from each of you. It's really been a wonderful experience, truly opened my eyes in a lot of ways, and I felt welcome to participate and to assert a point when necessary. I want to thank you for that. And mostly I wanted to thank the residents of Muskegon and the department directors and staff, who allowed me to question them in public forums or to meet with me and to allow me to have real conversations with people on sometimes sensitive topics. I hope that my time will have been of value to those that I represented and that the commission and other interested parties will be willing to possibly carry forward some of the ideas that I've shared or encouraged along the way. And I'm going to throw a few of those out there real quick, just for a reminder. I really feel we need a strong communications plan between city officials and our residents, including transparency, a robust partnership between the city and our public and other schools in the area to advocate for our youth and our families, the promotion of well-maintained, clear, engaging signage, letting us know what we need to know, and promotion of our natural resources and parks to our residents and tourists through education and advocacy. And finally, the promotion of cultural understanding. I think those are very important to us, among other things. A few of the things I wanted to highlight. Frankly, I think Muskegon is a great place to live and to raise a family, and it's full of hard-working people who are generous and friendly above all else. They have every right to have great expectations, to choose who leads them in public service, and I look forward to the excitement and generational rebirth that I feel is coming into the leadership of the two new at-large commissioners. So thank you for allowing me to serve.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any parting shots? I mean, words before you take your...
Only for you, Mr....
I'm so pleased to hear what Leah had to say, because I was delighted when she was appointed. I'm sure I must have had a part in that. I like to think I did. And she has been like a breath of fresh air for us, I think. We do need to be more cognizant of the younger group, the younger generation, and I hope in the next election, at least one more will run. Maybe Leah will run again, who knows? Anyway, it's been, I've had a very good time being on the commission. You know, I never do anything that I don't love, and I really enjoy this tremendously. And I hope that I've made a small difference for the people of this city, because they are the people that I really love and am happy to represent.
Thank you, Commissioner. Oh, Commissioner.
I wanted to say, I sit and I listen to both people from our audience and from the commissioners about the Elks and the decision that was made. I voted yes, because there was a process that was agreed upon that we would take, and Mr. Chessman made a decision. But when I hear people say things like, "We need to protect our youth," and "Where would our youth go now?" The Elks Club never was for kids. The Elks Club was an adult membership club. And if the only thing that we could think of was sending our kids down to the Elks to party with adults, then we have to take a look at ourselves as parents. And that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Anything else from the dais? If not, to each and every one of you, my friends, I wish you the most blessed holidays and holy days as we go into the season. And draw out from your heart, and let's just not celebrate December 25th. Let's celebrate life, 365 days a year, and how precious it is. And when it comes to doing something with our kids, regardless if they're eight months or 18, if your mother wants to sit down with you and read you a Christmas story, you sit on her lap. Because that is the greatest gift, is that time with the people that love you. So to each and every one of you, blessings in this season and into the new year. Thank you for coming out tonight. Let's take these celebrations of the heart and go out and share them in the greater community. And remember, do good things for others. All right? That's the most important thing. Do good things for others. Don't get too hung up on yourself. That's when we all get in trouble. So, go out and share that love, brothers and sisters. Take care. Thank you for coming out. Commissioner Hood?
If there's nothing else, I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you all.